Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, January, February 1st, 2023. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on WHCA. And if you could join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the general outlook for which stands my nation under God, in his resolve with everything we trust and strong.
Okay. So, the agenda tonight is basically the superintendent's report, which will consist of the budget hearing. And then we also have this strategic planning discussion and a couple other items, as well as a little bit on a new business. But the main topic tonight will certainly be the presentation of the budget. So, I'm gonna take it a little out of order for what we have here on the agenda, because I think it makes sense to open the public hearing and then talk about the budget and then close the public hearing, rather than have the budget presentation and then open the hearing. So, we can open the hearing and do it that way. So, we will, exactly. We will call the public hearing on the school budget open, and with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent to take us through tonight's presentation.
Do you need to vote?
To open the hearing? I don't think so.
Just going by the way the agenda reads.
Oh, vote, yeah. So, let's, I accept a motion.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Any discussion? Great. Almost in favor.
Thank you. Thanks, Fred.
Yes, unanimous. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So, good evening, folks. Thank you for being present tonight. Tonight is our public hearing on the fiscal '24 regional school district budget. The budget I present today aligns with the district's strategic plan, the school committee goals, and what we believe provides a quality education for the students of Whitman and Hanson. What you will see tonight is a level service budget. I have also included options for increasing services and enhancing the educational opportunities to our students. This budget is different from the budget presentations in December and January, and I assume this is not the final iteration of the district budget. Before I begin the presentation, I want to acknowledge the Budget Subcommittee of David, Steve, and Chris, who assisted John Stanbrook and myself in this presentation and other projects throughout the course of this year, including the five-year projection report. I also have to acknowledge the efforts of John Stanbrook. Over the past six months, he has gone above and beyond to put the district in a position to present a budget and adequately function as a business department. As you all know, we had our breach and everything was lost as far as financials. So, for John to put together tonight was yeoman's work. The documents today are still a work in progress and will most certainly change before we approve or send a budget to the towns. As you know, the governor's budget doesn't come out till March 1st. The presentation tonight is really in two parts: my PowerPoint and John's 29 dependencies, which the gallery should have copies of, and they will be uploaded to the district website tomorrow morning. My goal is to answer as many questions as I can on the PowerPoints tonight during the open session and potentially defer to our meetings of the 15th and the first and our future meetings to answer the questions from John's documents, as his latest update today was at 12:40 this afternoon. But we will still encourage and engage in as many questions and comments as possible and get through that tonight. So, with that, George, are you ready to go? Excellent. First slide in the presentation really is the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District is committed to providing each student with a high-quality education that promotes student success and responsible citizenship. Our current strategic plan, our hallmark success are excel, excellence in social-emotional learning, a pre-K to 12 system of teaching and learning, safe and secure schools, environments, which includes operations, and community engagement. Our strategic plan's strategic objectives are: One, foster a learning environment that centers on social, emotional, and academic growth for all. Implement a pre-K to 12 curriculum that is aligned and fosters student learning for all. Establish an evidence-based three-year plan to address persistent disparities in achievement among student subgroups, or the Student Opportunity Act. Establish a safe and secure learning environment, both physically and online. Increase engagement and communication with towns and community as it relates to activities and WH operations. School committee focus areas this summer '22-23. Number one, we looked at early college and innovation pathways. Number two, a robust related arts K-12 program. Culture and climate and start times, which was one of my goals, as well as an issue for the school committee. Our timeline for FY '24, we've already had a December 21st meeting, we've had a January 11th meeting, a January 12th meeting. February 1st, which is today, February 15th, budget will be discussed at the school committee meeting. March 1st is when the governor's budget is released. It is not a scheduled school committee meeting, but we may meet. March 8th is a school committee meeting tentative. March 14th, I was invited by the Whitman Finance Committee to speak with them. March 15th is a school committee meeting. March 16th is the deadline to submit our budget to the towns, so the 15th will be a vote. April 5th is the next scheduled school committee meeting. April 26th is a, if needed, school committee meeting, and May 1st are town meeting votes. Strategic plan initiatives that are included in the FY '24 budget presentation: A start time adjustment. A K-8 robotics and foreign language. Implementation of Spanish in grade 8 at Whitman Middle and Hanson Middle. Students in the front, we heard you last presentation. Goals and purposes of the FY '24 budget proposal: Provide special education programming to meet students in district. Provide English learners the support they need for success. Maintain current class sizes in all schools. Address school start times. Add foreign language options to middle school students. Support students' educational needs and the district operational needs. Maintain current staffing levels for pre-K to 12 and post-grad programs. Continue to address academic, social, and emotional regression due to COVID-19. Anticipated and unanticipated costs to the FY '24 budget. On the left's column, these are anticipated costs: contractual obligations, transportation, staff and custodial. Special education increases for in services, meaning locally, and placements, which is out-of-district. Insurance premiums and costs. Moving costs, meaning moving people from grants to the LEA budget, and utility costs. Unanticipated increases is a potential 14% increase for private and public education students. Those are out-of-district placements. And we have word that we have a potential for two out-of-district placements, one residential to be moving in, starting fiscal '24. What has happened in the last four years, leading us into '23-24, and I want to say thank you to the community for supporting our budgets the past four years, and thank you for the school committee for pushing forward a budget that supports students. A K-5 elementary math, English, and science program. Middle school social studies program, these were not in the budget prior to four years ago. An ELA program 6 and 8 through 8, a math program 6 through 8 that is currently grant-funded. Adding special education teachers for co-teaching. District-wide interventions in ELA and math. MTSS or support seminars at the high school. Elementary class sizes under 21 in almost every classroom. One-to-one student electronic devices. Adding curriculum, translation services, and staff to service the growing English-language population. Growing special education programs to keep students in our district, reducing placement costs and transportation costs, and last year, tuition-free full-day kindergarten. District-wide SPED. These are the programs across the district. At the elementary level, Connley houses our TLC, our emotional impairment program. Duval, our ASD, our severe autism program. Our PACES program, developmental and intellectual disabilities. Indian Head has our TLC, emotional impairment program, and a language-based learning program. Whitman Middle School has a TLC for emotional impairment and an ASD program that's moving from Duval to Whitman Middle next year, due to the age of the students. Hanson Middle School has PACES and a language-based learning program, and the high school has an ASD, a PACES program, an ALC, and a transition room. Class size projections, which I again want to thank the community and the school committee, these are class sizes we didn't see five, six years ago. Projections for '23-24. At Connley, Grade Care Kindergarten, I'm estimating, again, we are registering right now, 75 students, based on past four sections, or an 18.75 ratio. At Duval, 60. Three to four teachers right now are scheduled, to a 15 to 20 ratio. If it goes over 60, it'll be four staff. If it's less than 60, it'll probably be three staff, and that staff person will be reassigned within the district for retirement. Indian Head is at 96, or an estimate of 96. Five sections at 19.2. Grade 1, across the board. Connley, 71. Four at a 17.75. Duval is 53 next year. Three teachers at 18.3. Indian Head, 94. Five, or 18.8 class size. Grade 2, Connley, 86. Four teachers, 21.5 students. Duval, 74. Four teachers, 18.5. Indian Head, 100, which is easy math for me. Five sections at 20 each. Grade 3 at Connley, 69. Four teachers, 17.5. Duval, 70. Four teachers, 17.5. Indian Head, 92. Five teachers, 18.4. Grade 4, Connley, 98. We are adding a teacher, removing that teacher from Duval, K, or first grade next year, because of class size. Will be four at 20.5. Duval is 85, at four at 21.25. And if you drop down to Hanson Middle, is 103, grade 5. Five sections at 20.6. Down below, grade 6, Hanson Middle has 115, six staff for 19, average class size. Whitman Middle is 164. Eight sections for 20.5. Grade 7 at Hanson Middle is 110. Six at 18.3. Whitman Middle is 178. 21.25. And grade 8 is an anomaly right now, at this point, 100. Six at 16.6. And Whitman Middle is 176. Eight at 22. Flipping over, class size projections at the high school. I'm anticipating 292 students to move from 8th grade to 9th grade. We average 65 students going to either vocational schools, Norfolk Aggie, Bristol Aggie, South Shore Voc Tech, or to private schools, so I reduce that by 65. It might be higher, it might be lower. For a freshman, class size of 227. Grade 10, I'm looking at 258. Grade 11 at 262, and the senior class at 246. Throwing in the Whitman preschool, we anticipate an enrollment of 115. We have seven staff members. These staff members service half-day programs and full-day programs, and class sizes are very within the means of a preschool, usually 12 to 15 students per classroom. Retirement and replacement planning. On the left side, you will see the retirements that we have within the district and the salary allotment for next year. In the middle column, you will see the replacement cost, and we've tried to do a master's for TOPPS, which I usually don't ask principals, but because of trying to make sure we're fiscally responsible in this budget, that's the number that I'm looking at replacing current staff. We have a teacher at Connley that we're going to replace with current staff, over savings of $100,005.38. Teacher at Indian Head with a savings of $22.3. Teacher at Connley, savings of $31.5. The nurse at Connley is retiring, saving us around $32.5. Duval, 98.5, saving $31.5. Teacher at Whitman Middle School, saving us $31.5. Indian Head, $31.5. The principal at the preschool, Trish, is retiring. I'm guessing the salary between 105 and 115, saving us 10. And a teacher at Indian Head, saving us $22.5. I was hopeful, prior to the other day, that we were going to be able to move more staff members from grants to the LEA budget. When John presented our numbers in December, he gave a rough estimate of a 3% increase in salaries across the board. Those numbers were incorrect. We had differential of a significant amount of money to make this budget work as a level service budget right now. I infused most of these retirements into the budget, and we're only able to move one position over from a grant, ESER 3 grant, which is our current tech coach. The next page are the ESER utilization funds for fiscal '24, which expires going into fiscal '25. Currently, under ESER 3, or under ESER 3, we have one BCBA at a salary of 67. We have two EL teachers at a salary of approximately $125,000, and three district interventionists at a salary of $268,000. We also have $300,000 worth of district paraprofessionals that are taken from the elementary schools into ESER. The goal and objectives for FY '25 will be to drill down, after three years of data collecting, how well the interventionists worked in the district, and if there are necessity moving forward, or how we could pare down that. Again, gathering the data that we're using from the curriculum that has been purchased, and using the PowerBlocks, the extension, and the building-based interventionists now to see if that will be a reduction. So, I know that's a big number, but it's a number that we're going to work on through the course of this school year, moving into FY '25. We had a conversation with the principals today. We also have to look at the efficiency of how we use paraprofessionals within the district, because we did explode during COVID to make sure that our students were academically supported and socially-emotionally supported in the classroom. The next slide is an explanation of MTSS, ESSA, not to be confused with ESER, and DESI. So, MTSS stands for our multi-tiered system of support. The Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, was passed in 2015, I believe, which is the primary federal education law for public schools. Describes MTSS as a framework for schools to ensure all students receive high-quality instructional support. We all remember "No Child Left Behind." Okay? That went away, and ESSA came in. We have not necessarily followed, as a district, from 2015 to the past couple of years, of implementing the MTSS support model. I know you've heard presentations in the past, and this is why we put Nikki in that spot, to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to support all our students. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESI, provides MTSS as a blueprint. Mobilization guides, self-assessment, and resources to support the implementation of this framework. This is, again, drilling down into our interventionists and our coaches at the building-based level and at the district-based level to make sure we are following federal guidelines of ESSA. Next page is district-wide supports for all of our learners. Currently, our academic-related supports outside of the current classroom teacher, and we know our classroom teacher is the most integral part of the educational experience for our students. We have four district-based interventionists, 11 building-based interventionists, one MTSS full-time employee, that's Nikki, five district-wide curriculum coordinators, those are the department heads at high school, and an elementary coordinator, two district-wide reading support specialists. They work primarily with students who struggle with reading on IEPs at the middle level. Co-taught classes in all content areas at the secondary level. We used to focus in at the high school level, 9 through 12, for co-taughts. We really tried to push co-teaching and inclusion at the middle level, so those students get those supports. Social and emotional-related supports that we currently have, we have five BCBAs in the district. We have seven school psychologists in the district. We have 10 adjustment counselors in the district. We have the transition room at the high school, or at the, excuse me, at the high school and at Hanson Middle School. And we are also looking at a partnership, which is a cost of $10,000 to $15,000, with an outside support agency card called CARE-SOLIS, which will assist our adjustment counselors of bypassing the long waits to get a therapist or a counseling appointment for students in need. We are, currently, the high school looked into it, they made a recommendation to me, and the director of special education, myself, George, and Nikki are going to look at this program. What I'm hearing from the boots on the ground, it's taking six months for a student who has a need to get into therapy. CARE-SOLIS guarantees, by pushing it out through their therapist, to cut that in half, if not three-quarters, to get those students the services they need. So, it's something we're trying to invest in. English multilingual learners. School year '22-23, this is data points for us right now. We have 183 English-language learners. 19 students are former English learners, or FELs. Don't be confusing Ls and Fels with our acronyms, but those are former English learners. We have 12 different first languages right now in Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. We have five ESL-certified teachers. We have 2.5 academic tutors. Our student-staff ratio is 1 to 26.9, which falls within the guidelines to provide them those supports. And we also hired a full-time family liaison to make sure that translation services are onboard in the district, and that person can go out in the community and assist the families with community activities, and also with our EL PAC. Staff positions that have been added since fiscal '21. These positions are funded through the district budget, either that we added them to the budget, that we use them. We had federal grants, ESER, Title I, special education, and/or we used retirements and attrition to fund these positions. We have two, we had two special education positions. The elementary and middle school coordinators have transitioned to the director of MTSS, Equity and Equity, and to district-wide HR. One of those positions was Nikki moved up from the middle school piece to this position as we realigned that position, and the elementary person resigned, and Mr. Loesch felt that we didn't need that position anymore. So, we made good on an HR position, which was desperately needed in the district, and the director of MTSS. We've hired seven regular education or general education teachers. We've hired three special education teachers. One music teacher. One district-wide elementary math interventionist or coach. One district-wide elementary ELA interventionist or coach. One secondary math coach. One secondary ELA interventionist or coach. One technology coach. Three elementary math interventionists or coaches. ELA and reading support was already in place. We had, we always have had reading specialists in the district at the elementary levels. We have never had math help for our students. We hired two middle school math interventionists or supports. Two EL teachers. One ELL tutor. Two BCBAs, and one family liaison. Fiscal '15 through '24, snapshot at our final budgets. You can, I'm not, I can read through fiscal '15. We approved a budget of $45,318,587 with a 1.67 increase. Fiscal '16 was $45,688, or a .82% increase. Fiscal '17, $47,079,141, 3.04% increase. FY '18, $48,688,028, 3.42% increase. FY '19, $50 million, 523,181, 3.77. FY '20, $52,425,738, 3.77. FY '21, $55,320,238, 5.52. FY '22, $56,797,597, 2.67% increase. FY '23, $58,492,314, or 2.98% increase. And as of today, right now, fiscal '24, $60 million, 510,901, and 43 cents, or a 3.45% increase to this year's budget. The next page is a look back. One of the school committee members asked if we could do a look back, and I don't necessarily believe in looking back, but this is pertinent, as we look forward. The budgets in the past, FY '15 and FY '16, if you look to the right-side column, if we had managed to get a 3%, and I wasn't the superintendent in FY '15 and FY '16, but I know we had many budget discussions and budgets were tight. But if we had gotten a 3% increase those years, and moved the budget line along the way with the budgets after the fact, and I can't see my bottom number, because it's whited out. Can you? Sorry. Can you give me that number, Chris?
This bottom, bottom?
Yes.
The 65,398,45, or the...
In the red there? I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry, you can right up look up at the screen. So, I've got a black and white copy, and I apologize. If we had gotten the 3% in those two fiscal years, the increases as we go, and we know things grow, we would have looked at a budget in FY '13 of $60 million, 539,845, FY '23, correct, and we'd be in a better spot by about $2 million right now. So, it's just a look back. It's not a dig at the communities, I just wanted to give a look back and give credence to what one of our members had asked me to do. And I think it's pertinent, part of our discussion as we move forward. These are options for the school committee. As I mentioned, level service, that 3, 4, 5 right now is a level service budget that I'm presenting. The options, and we heard some detailed explanations of why foreign language and multiple experiences for culture are important in the middle level. The K-8 robust related arts team over the summer came up with this charge, and George put this together for us for tonight. A STEM or robotics option for our district, meaning it's done through library class at the elementary schools, using existing tech staff, using a pre-constructed curriculum of iRobot for K-2 and Robotify 3 to 8. Revamping the curriculum at both middle schools, it's a solid foundation for high school. Yearly cost of K-2 iRobot is $30,000. Robotify is $25,000. The additional cost of this budget, if the school committee so chooses to move us forward, is $55,000 for STEM robotics. We have two options for foreign language for the middle levels. Online offering for all grade 7 and 8 students at a self-pace. Students will work independently, online, with on-demand tutoring, out of school. That's part of the program. Students receive support through extension support block with an actual teacher. We put human teacher twice per week at each school. After-school is needed, the teacher will be a full-time employee. One Spanish teacher at approximately $70,000. One Spanish program through Ingenuity is $24,000. On-demand tutoring is $4,400, for a cost of $98.4, to the addition to the budget, is option one. Foreign language option, two, for the middle schools. Whitman Middle School would require, for equity sake, two Spanish teachers, $137,000. One reading teacher at $67,000. All students can't take foreign language, and we would have to have an actual class for them to attend. Hanson Middle School will be looking at one Spanish teacher at $67,000. One reading teacher at $67,000. Total cost of the budget, $335,000. My opinion at this point, and it's just, and we can go into it, again, it's something there. I don't know if we can hire three Spanish teachers in this current climate of teachers. They're few and far between. I'm also looking at a potential building project in Whitman, moving a great alignment. I would love to, if the committee so decided, move to an online program to see how it works and build kids, but that's just my opinion at this point. It's further discussion down the road. Special education is the next piece. It's an estimated 14% increase, and I'm not going to read through this whole piece of presentation, but the Operational Services Division of the Commonwealth is setting a 14% inflation rate for all approved special education program tuitions for cities and towns. These are private special ed programs and public special ed programs, or public schools. The next page over shows the differential of what we've seen since FY '11 in increases. So, John has placed a 3% benchmark in our budget for this increase. If this comes through in FY '24, it can be 14%, but I'm also not confident that it's going to be 14%. So, this number is not, this total increase of $650,000 is not in the budget. It is a separate line item. The school committee will have to guide me. item. The school committee will have to guide me in how to fund this, and we could use either excess and deficiency, as I see it as a one-time cost, or we could use FY '25 circuit breaker potentially, and we can go into that conversation. But this number was originally in the budget in December and January. I pulled it out, so it wouldn't be an increase of town costs because it will be coming back, at least the majority will be coming back in FY '25 circuit breaker. And I don't know the number. The number can fluctuate from the 3% to a 14%. I don't believe it's going to go over 14%, but we won't know that number till, one, potentially the governor's budget, and, two, until the tuition increases actually come, as bills come July. The next page is transportation at start times, and this is a preliminary proposal. I'm not going to go into it too much right now because on the 15th of February, I'm going to be providing the school committee with a transportation guideline update because our guidelines are different than the current regional agreement that we are under. So this is a preliminary proposal on adjusting school start times based on feedback that I've received, surveys, and actual conversations with students. Scenario one, right now, we would run the middle school at 7:20. They'd be released at 1:50. The high school at 8 o'clock, they'd be released at 2:35. And the elementaries, we are adjusting all elementaries in all three scenarios to a six-and-a-half-hour day and aligning them to start at the same time. So elementary would be 8:40 to 3:10. Scenario two for you folks to look at is the high school starting at 7:20, ending at 1:55. They need the additional five minutes for time on learning. Middle school's an 8 o'clock start with a 2:30 release, and elementary's is an 8:40 start and a 3:10 release. Scenario three keeps the high school as is, the middle school as is, and the elementary's 8:25 start to a 2:55 start. The costs are on the right side. We're using 13 based on our numbers today. 13, two-run buses for added cost per day of 584532. 10, three-run buses at a cost of $4758 or an increase of $10,000 a day, making the total budget of 1.908651. That would be the budget if we align these next year. The FY '24 proposed budget for transportation is $1,759,984. So this is an increase, again, one-time increase of 14866 approximately. And my recommendation, if we move to align any of this, is using E and D as it's a one-time cost that will be reimbursed in transportation reimbursement currently, which is close to 90, between 90 and 94%. It's another decision that we can make and discuss. And this last page is a page we've used frequently. I want to, again, commend the committee and the towns. We've moved from really close to the bottom. We are not the bottom in the South Shore anymore. We are moving up. So that's progress, and that's something that I want to commend folks on. We're not at the other communities yet, and I don't know if we'll ever be. We need to be content to where we stand and what's applicable to both Whitman and Hanson. But it's important that we are still behind most of our league mates in our athletic league and most of our colleagues on the South Shore when it comes to pupil spending. And again, it's not a diss on the communities. It's what it was. It's what it is. And it has improved, and it continues to improve. And with this budget, I hope to continue moving forward and moving that line further for our students. You also have 29 appendices that we have to look at, people in the community have to look at. I'm open to questions from the committee, and I'm open to questions regarding this presentation that either George, Nikki, John, myself, Mike can answer simply, or if I don't have an answer today, I will take that, and we will answer that question in February at the next school committee meeting. There's a lot of information here, and I want to, again, say that we updated these documents. We met as a budget subcommittee last night. These documents that you have in your hands were not updated last night. John did these this morning. So I haven't memorized much of it. So if I'm not sure, and I say, "I'm not sure," it's a real "I'm not sure." We have to rebuild our system, and all I'm asking for is some grace in answering some questions. So with that, I'm open.
So why don't we open it up to the committee first? Again, I think it's important to just acknowledge that from a information standpoint, so the budget subcommittee had the blue slides last night, and we did provide some feedback on that. Members of the committee got that this afternoon, and then everyone got the financial documents this afternoon. So I think it is going to take us a little time to go through these. I'm not sure if folks had time at 3:30 when it came through. I did not. I have not even looked at these yet to speak for myself. So I know we're going to have a budget subcommittee meeting next week. But I'm just kind of prefacing, it's good to talk about these, but we're going to need a minute to go through them before I think we're at a point where, as a committee, we feel comfortable with them. So just kind of wanted to chat at first. But can we start with committee questions, thoughts, comments? Chris?
Yeah, Jeff, I just had a question. I didn't want to interrupt you, but I believe it was when you were talking about the, you're going from the retirement and replacement planning to the next slide, the ESER money used. And it said there was a miscalculation at some point or something. I didn't really hear what you said. So in December, John took all of our staff and put a 3% increase for everybody in the district. That came up higher between steps and lane changes, and it seemed like this bubble for us this year was that lane change, that nine-to-10 bubble. So some folks weren't three. Some folks were four. Some folks were six. Some folks were seven. So on, again, full transparency, on Monday morning at, or Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock, John presented me with a 5.5% increase of our budget. And I didn't think it would be fair to present that to the community. So some of the moves that we were going to move some of these ESER folks over, I shifted and used the retirement savings to lower the costs upfront. I just didn't think it would be fair, and it wouldn't be in my, my goal is to present a budget that's efficient and provides for our students. I am also in favor of moving the needle if the committee so chooses, absolutely. But I also didn't feel it would be fair to present a budget to the budget subcommittee or to the community at a 5.5 when we said it wasn't going to go over 4.18. So we did what we could. We moved some things around to make sure that those savings, and again, my goal this year was to move as many folks from ESER over, especially the EL teachers that are not going away, and some of the pairs that I know we're going to need. But again, that was, I presented that to the subcommittee last night, and this is where the number we got.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question on the EL teachers. I have a few questions on that slide.
Which slide is that?
Oh, I don't think there are numbered. It says English multilingual learners. It's at the, I don't know what number it is. Sorry. I have a couple of questions, so bear with me. So the difference between an ESL certified teacher and an EL academic tutor?
Nick, you want to answer that?
Yeah.
Hold you, please.
The ESL teacher is certified. The tutor is working under the teacher's guidance. So the teachers, the tutors are not planning the lessons. Always, they're working with the ESL certified teacher to provide the instruction. So they are working in smaller groups, usually with more advanced students. So that's the difference there. And then the break, oh, did you have another question?
I did. I'm sorry. So with that, the, on this slide, it says the staff-to-student ratio is 1 to 26.9, and Jeff said that that was within the guidelines. What is the guideline for that ratio? That seems really high when you're talking about students who, you know, have varied understandings of the English language.
So are, so are, there isn't a specific, actually, legal requirement?
There isn't, okay. That was my question.
What we're trying to do is with our newcomer students, or what we call our level ones and twos, we are trying to keep those smaller. So those class sizes, we try to keep to around 12 students. With our larger or our more advanced students, our levels three, four, and five, those may be bigger. This number was just taken from looking at our total numbers, and that's where that came from. Just to do a comparison, because we only had 78 Ls last year, starting the year, yes. And so we were trying to see, are we still, even though we've increased our L teacher numbers, are we still having a similar ratio? So we, and we are, to what we were, where we were at. So our teaching staff did have to go up because our numbers went up, but are we meet, are we under, are we over? So that's where that number came from and why we were looking at it.
Okay. And there's no legal mandate or anything?
No, there's not. No, no. So we're just trying to do what we know is best practice, or what would be best for those kiddos. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Fred, and then David.
Transportation. I know you've mentioned transportation. What percentage of reimbursement are you using?
John, what do we use for transportation reimbursement? You'll have to look at that
Good evening, everyone. Let's see. I'm looking at document number. It's either 18 or 19, so let's see. 85%.
And that's document 18?
Yes.
Are you aware that the governor would raise the means that they've come to a consensus of the revenue increase for next year, 1.6%? They're way down. I would just be very cautious.
Okay. I was not aware of that.
Any projections that we're making?
So not the 90 that we had last year? Is that what you're hearing? It's going to be lower than that?
Well, they're anticipating revenue to increase by 1.6% overall, you know, within the state. So how they divvy it out, and the 90s that we've seen have been unprecedented.
Yes, right, correct.
You know, we normally would see 60, 65. I would just hate to see us anticipate something higher and then just get whacked in the head, so to speak. And then as far as the look back goes, I do want to just maybe add, just for fairness, I think it was FY '16 where it was a very, very low percentage of an increase, but that was also a year that the taxpayers said no at the ballot box. You know, so the original budget that was presented to the town was higher, and that was, I believe, called our student success budget.
Correct.
It didn't succeed.
And that's why, Fred, I said there was no dig. I just wanted to look back, and I know there was an override that year as well. And that was a difficult budget cycle for us as administrators.
David?
Yeah. So Jeff, thank you for your presentation tonight. I appreciate it. John, I appreciate your work over the last couple of months. I know it hasn't been easy. I guess my question to you, I know you presented a level services budget. Could you tell me if you believe that current level services presentation is an adequate and equitable budget for long-term sustainability? And if you don't believe that, could you tell me what services would be included to make it more equitable?
Okay. So a tough question. I try to put forth a budget that's fair. We had a meeting with the school committee in December. We had a meeting with both communities. One community told us where they were at somewhat. The other community I haven't heard from, so I have, I don't have an idea. So I tried to present the level service. I do believe we can move forward, and that's with the support of the committee. If the committee wants to drive us forward, I will fully support that. That's why I put those options in. And again, I think we're listening to our students, and our students put forth a very reasonable and, I want to say, a reasonable argument to support increasing services at the middle level. Outside of that, if we can move some of our ESER folks over, if that's within the flavor of the committee, I would appreciate that so that we're not coming back next year worrying about ELs. This committee knows that I support moving the district forward. This administration that we have, with the leadership team that's sitting in the back, have asked for and are utilizing the services that the committee has supported. Our class sizes have never been better, and you are, you will see through the data that we are getting, through using our assessment tools, kids are moving forward. Kids are achieving. That being said, I also don't want to put a panic if the towns or if the committee doesn't feel it's the right time to move us forward with those other options, because I have a teaching staff that is teetering on morality, on moral, their moral.
Morale.
Their morale, excuse me, not the morals. Their morale is challenged. Things are difficult in the classroom. Things are difficult with our students. Our students are still coming back to a socialization that they're not ready for. So inside the classroom, kids are acting different. They haven't gone back to pre-19. Parents are different. They have always been demanding, but appropriately demanding. But there's been an increase of, "I want an answer now." And I found that at my level, and it's not bad, but it's just different. So I don't, didn't want to present a budget that people in the gallery would leave today and say, "There's no way we can succeed with that budget," and then have my teachers hear that and say, "Jeff, there are layoffs coming like there were in FY ' '20 when we didn't have a budget. We pink slipped 62 people while we were home at COVID, and I don't want to do that again." So the budget I put forth was something that I think is achievable based upon what we need to service the students that we have in front of us right now with the staff I have in front of me right now. That being said, I put the options in there from the information I received from our students and from what we've done over working the committees to drive us forward. And I'm, I think that's worth a conversation as we move through this budget process. And I'm hoping that we can move the needle further, but I'm also hoping to not create panic within my staff if we set a budget that's not sustainable from the communities. And that's just where the superintendent sits. You folks are the people that approve this budget, and that's me speaking from my heart, too. There is, the morality, the morale in our buildings is challenged right now. And what I don't want to do is set up a scenario where people are worried about losing their positions. That's all I'm saying. And I know George has something else to add.
Yeah, I think that the budget going forward is one that is helpful. I do see on the horizon, though, that we need to make sure that we fund and we keep the interventionist cycle that we have in the budget. When you look at '93, when you look at no child left behind, we left a lot of students behind. So then every child, ESER came out in '15. That was the second phase. We now have legislation that's coming out, is July of '23, that says that interim assessments should be up to five times a year. We currently do three. And what we are seeing is students gaining and gaining success. If you look at just the third grade at Dubal School, if you look at what they did last year and what they're doing this year, just on how they're doing on the HMH and the reading scores, these things are working. So we're helping students. Is there, in the future, the hard conversations that have to have about how do we refine that process and how do we streamline that process to make sure it's fair, to make sure it's equitable, to make sure we're doing it right, and to make sure we're doing it the most cost-effective way? Obviously. But if you were to say that we can, all students are now caught up, and we don't need interventions, then we would have captured something that no one in the free world who teaches kids has ever done. So that is still needed, but that is something that's going to be on the horizon. But as what we put forward this year is doable, is workable, will give us the tools we need, and you have options for yourself, and I could talk all day about those options, but I'd probably get in trouble, but it is something that can go forward that does help students.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just looking at the slide for the special education costs, I know we talked about before, but you know, average increase over the past 12 years was 1.82%, and you know, this 14% increase. Wrap my head around that. I mean, that's.
That's the ODD. Mr. Loesch?
It's drastic.
Mike will explain, you know.
Statewide?
Statewide. This is from the state.
It's crushing.
And the SPED directors have argued, I wrote to Allison Sullivan and Josh Cutler, it's, I don't know if there's any legislation. I don't, my gut says it's not going to be 14, but it's not going to be 2.
Yes.
It's going to be somewhere in the middle, and we won't know that.
Still a large number.
And one of the reasons I pulled it out of the district budget, because that's, I think, we don't know that. And it could be 300, and we find out next year when we get the bill, it's 300, but we've assessed the town 650 or something.
What changed?
What's that? What's that?
Why, why would they want to?
Go ahead, Mike.
So I think what we're really seeing here in this extreme increase is kind of the fallout from COVID. Many of these schools are struggling to hire quality employees. These are our neediest students in the state. And usually they're hiring the folks who are fresh out of school, sometimes unlicensed. And I think the state is, you know, finally realizing that they need to be able to increase the budgets of these schools so that they can offer more money and hire, offer higher quality staff. I do think it's a little lacking foresight that, you know, 14% all at once is crushing districts everywhere. So I think there has been some fierce advocacy out there to really lower this percentage across the board just because it's going to hurt on one end. And you know, it's also going to decrease capacity to have districts take the option to send to those schools. So it's needed, but I think at this level is a little extreme.
Okay. I understand the fact.
So just, Chris, just asking you. These are our audit district students.
Yeah.
So students that go out to, and this isn't collaboratives. These are our private placements.
Correct.
And public placements.
Correct.
Can I follow up on a question? Of that 14% increase, because as your sped cost goes up, and these are the more expensive students, we also have circuit breaker. Now granted, we fund, we're always a year behind in what they pay us for circuit breaker. But isn't it a fair thing to say that even if it goes up 14%, once you hit the threshold, 44,000, somewhere around there? And then you get back 75% of every dollar above that line. And I know there's talk that they're going to perhaps increase that threshold, perhaps. You never know. But right now, we know the 75% rules in place. You know, that's what we're going to get. It's not going to go down.
Certainly not.
So where have we calculated those monies that are coming back to us? Have we, you know, put it to the side or whatever?
So, John, you want to jump up and just talk a little circuit breaker? So the school committee talked about circuit breaker last year about putting what we receive into the fiscal budget for this year. So, John?
So, and I just want to interject real quick because I think Fred's question might be a little different, right? Are you asking, hey, if we had to pay an additional $600,000 this year, what do we anticipate getting back next year?
You're going to get back X amount next year? Okay, similar, we're anticipating when we're talking about transportation.
Yes.
We're talking about, you know, how much we're going to get in reimbursement. Okay, but we're also running a year behind on reimbursement.
Right.
But yet we're factoring in those funds.
Right. So this was something we touched on at Budget Subcommittee last night. And I think this is the takeaway we had is to make sure we understand, like, what is that reimbursement? Again, it's not going to help us.
Right now.
For this year, but it kind of speaks to the one-time offset that we're getting hit.
But if, if we decided as a committee that we needed to spend one-time money knowing that we have it coming back.
Correct. Hundred percent.
Then that's a proper useful one-time money. It's not going into the operating for recurring expense.
Correct.
I think that's what we're trying to understand, right? So I think the essence of your question of.
Because I don't see it.
Unless you have that, unless you got that answer in the last 24 hours.
But it's not in here anywhere.
Right, no.
In the presentation, it's not in.
No, it's not, it's not in the numbers. It's aside.
But to your point, Fred, it makes all the sense in the world to understand what that would be going forward. So, yes.
Can I just quickly add on to Fred? So, tuition tab done, obviously, throughout the pandemic. And I know those are not so much placements, but Plymouth Collaborative. And you know, just seeing, especially us just joining REITs and so forth, and all that we've been involved in. So it would make sense that that 44,000 goes up. I mean, we consider ourselves Plymouth Area Collaborative to be one of the more lower costs with, what is that, Market Basket? We're like the Market Basket of the collabs, I think, or something. But yeah, that's definitely, that has to be. I mean, if it stops at 44,000, that's a, you gotta use a higher number.
It's an average of every school district in the state.
Yeah.
And their foundation. I mean, typical DESI. You have to be a mathematician with an engineering degree and a doctorate in order to understand what the formulas are.
Yes.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions, but I just wanted to start out by thinking about the morale of the teachers. Like, that just hits really hard. And, you know, we, obviously, first and foremost is the students in meeting their needs. The new Secretary of Education in Massachusetts talked immediately about three important things: stabilize, heal, and transform. And I feel like that's where we're still at, right? Trying to stabilize and heal. So it, and when you say staff may be panicked about pink slips, I don't think we're at all near that, and nor should we. Number one, you know, when I joined the committee four years ago, we did the Mars report. I still have it from 2019. So it's, it's a member town's financial report. So we know where our towns stand. And we know that best practices for finances in municipalities is that they should take care of their largest budget first. And the schools are the largest budget. Absolutely, they should be. It's education, it's the future. So I can't at all participate in any type of false narrative if we get there that, you know, the towns can't afford our education budget. You know, it is the most important. And we are nowhere near providing what our students and staff deserve. So I really hope that we consider that, you know, there are towns around us that have, you know, less aid than we get. Lot less Chapter 70 aid. We don't recognize that enough, how much our towns are supported by $25 million a year in state aid. And there are towns that may have left, less revenue, too. And they're providing programs, and we're not, including the world languages, start times that are, that are healthy for all students. So I just, you know, have a lot to say about that. But I'll get you just a couple of questions. On slide 13, it's the retirement one, Jeff?
Yes.
Is there any consideration to, so it's, yeah, it's probably page 13-ish, Retirement and Replacement Planning? The savings column, my eyeball is about $300,000. Do you have anything in writing what we're doing with that savings? How we're, you know, using those funds?
So it went, as I said before, the numbers that I had in December were off. So salary increases move the budget needle to a 5.5. So the savings that I, those, that $300,000 savings went right into making sure that this budget was around a three, three and a half target pushing it forward.
Okay. And can we see those numbers at all? Again, I'm going to have more questions probably after we've been through this.
They're in the document. And those, those numbers will probably shift at, those line items might shift as we go forward.
But the contractual salary figures will stay. I mean, is that the number that changed? I'm trying to understand.
Yes. So, so let me just say, I'm a teacher. I moved from step nine to 10. Last year I was making $72,000, and this year I'm making 79. So it wasn't a 3% increase, and that pushed the needle a lot to that 5%. It was really salary line items that pushed, pushed us forward.
Okay. And then I think, I mean, I'll just ask one more question. You mentioned class sizes. And then on slide 11, you mentioned grade eight is an anomaly. So I think I'd like to just take some time, not tonight, but at some point, to look at these and see. Because you have some question marks in here, too.
Well, the kindergarten's class size, I don't know. I'm just making a guess based on what we have. So, but, you know, I, John, I knew you were going to ask that question about grade eight. So I have George talking a little bit about scheduling. And that doesn't mean that it's not a solid, but this is an explanation of why.
Okay.
So if you look at the middle school schedules in front of you on whatever, I think it was slide 13, you see that the sections are higher at the Whitman Middle School than they are at the Hanson Middle School. And when you do scheduling, if you do it from the way of you divide the number of kids and put that, put those kids into one class, that's basically what happens at elementary school. Because that teacher teaches all the subjects. However, when you get to the higher grades and you go subject-specific, you have to have what are called teams. So you have teams that say, four teachers teach science, social studies, ELA, and mathematics. So the issue that's taking place is, is that the Whitman Middle School has eight teachers per grade level, meaning they have two teams of four. So two social, two science, two ELA, two math. They all have those certifications. What happens when you get to a number that is smaller than that or bigger than that? You now have what are called split teams. So what hap, what's happening now at the Hanson Middle School is that you have teams that, you have people that teach some in seventh grade and some in eighth grade. So they have splits. So you'll see six at one of the grade levels or two of the grade levels at sixth and seventh grade. Because what that's trying to do is say, we recognize that you can't have eight because you'd have 12 kids in a class. However, if you then just go to four, you're going to have too many kids in that class. So depending on really what the student population is, there is a gray area that's very difficult to get around to make it completely even. The only other really way you can address that at that level is if you were to be able to hire what are called humanities, which is one person that teach both ELA and social studies, or STEM, which is a person that, they offer that certification in science and math. And then you could combine those, reduce a couple of teachers. But those, those people are very hard to find, and we currently don't have them in our structure.
Okay. My, my follow-up comment, and I'm just looking at what you had provided in September, too. I don't know what the solution is going forward because I see, you know, Hanson Middle School in eighth grade, as you mentioned, it's about, it's six sections of 20 to 21 kids per class. So 120 kids in that grade. But fourth grade at Indian Head is 100 kids.
Right. So, so what could happen?
What, there's going to need to be a shift?
Sure. So what happens then is that because you go to the sixth grade level, you have teachers that can teach at a sixth grade level. You can still use your elementary certification. And then you can combine at a sixth grade level to say, we can, if we need to eliminate some staff, we can take two staff and they can share subjects, because that's what the elementary certification allows. But there will have to be shifts, like Bill is constantly working on. We constantly talk about what happens at that year. How do we make sure there's a balance so you don't get either, do away with a group that now you have 26 per class, four teachers in that, or make it a 12. So there are things to do. The biggest issue comes with DESI certifications at grade seven higher, because that's subject-specific.
Yeah. And I'm not saying four with 26 in class is okay. But, but I can speak to you personally. We know in Whitman Middle, years ago, there were 28, 29, 30 in a class.
Oh, absolutely.
So I lived that. So it's, it's important that they stay small.
Correct.
That's my point. I don't want anyone to live that again. But, you know, what I'm seeing, you know, again, right now in the grade seven, 13, 14, 15 in one school in a grade seven, and 22, 21, 20.
Right. And that can be addressed, again, by that split shift. If you remember back 2005, 2006, the Whitman Middle School had 10 sections because they had the two sections of eight, you know, the teachers that taught that. And then they, they had their own shift where you would take people who would teach two grade seven math and two grade eight math, two grade seven ELA. So that was what was used to lower class size. So there are, and then through attrition, that didn't happen through lean budgets and everything. And that's what led to when your children were there, those higher levels. But there are things that can be done. So the committee does, and then the school department, that's our responsibility to make sure that we watch that. And I can say that Bill's aware of that, and it's not going to get to that level. But there are things that then have to, there's different models you can adopt to make sure it's even.
Thank you.
Hillary, and then Fred, and then I really want to kind of get to public.
I just had a follow-up to, I guess, John's point. The high school, I know this is like a loaded question, but we don't have, we have the grades, the number of students per grade, but we don't have average class size. And I know that depending on whether it's, you know, college, I don't know if you call it college prep, whatever that is, versus AP. But in the future, it'd be nice to see, because I think we focus a lot on K through eight and having small class size, and that's awesome and great. But what happens when you have a freshman who goes and sits in a class of 28, and they're used to having a class of 18, and now they don't have that, you know, direct contact with the teacher? So looking at that would also be helpful, some numbers along those lines. And I know it's not a perfect science.
We could, we could do that. But I'll just tell you, the, the highest class sizes in the high school, and I think, Chris, you can speak to, is foreign language.
Right.
Okay, because everybody's taking it. And then you run the gamut from a class size of 25.
It depends on the scheduling, too.
And to a class of 12, to PE and health are up there as well. But I can absolutely put that together.
Okay. Thank you.
You can put that together.
I just want to address one thing that was said as far as, I'm in agreement that we have a lot of needs. And I'd love to see us be able to go forward. And, you know, if we decide collectively, what I would like to see happen is we decide collectively as a group to send a budget that is two-folded. We tried for student success once. I think that we should try for it again. Because for us to bang our heads against the wall and send the towns a bill that they can't afford, I just don't see doing that. It's not up to us to go over the town's budget and try and tell the town, oh, you should cut this, you should cut that. You have too many police officers. You have too many firefighters. They have their budgets, and they have what they're doing for a reason. And they justify that to the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectment. We know that there's a guidance for us, at least in Whitman. And if we can live within a guidance, because, you know, what do you do at your house? You have $1,000 in the bank and you've got four bills to pay. And, well, jeez, if I paid this one too much, but now it's an $1,100 bill, and you don't have $1,100 bucks, you can't do anything with it. I would hope that we can make a case for everything that we want. I think the robotics are an incredible opportunity. I think getting the foreign languages back into the middle schools. I'd love to see if that works. Can we expand that to the elementaries? You know, that's what's going to be best for kids. We've got to ask the taxpayers, will you write that check? Because I don't think it's fair for us to send that to the towns without having that backup. That's my personal, and I just want to say that to address verbiage.
And I'm sure we'll have ample opportunities over the next 45 days to, you know, hear everyone's opinion and thoughts on kind of what the best budget is. We probably don't have to settle that tonight. And I'm sure we'll have that conversation for weeks to come. So unless anyone else on the committee feels otherwise, we do have some public folks here. So I'd like to hear if they have anything to share. So everyone's okay with that? If you could just give us your name and where you're from.
John Galvin, High Street, Whitman. I just wanted to really chime in on what Fred brought up about circuit breaker. And if you recall, we had, we went through the circuit breaker last year. And this committee decided that whatever the reimbursement is for circuit breaker, that's what will be used in the following budget. So circuit breaker is fully in this budget right now. The circuit breaker revenue is in this budget. If you go to document 12, you'll see it. Top to Fund 440, no, 4400, that's circuit breaker. If you go to document 12, you'll see it, top to Fund 440, no, 4400, that's Circuit Breaker. And what Circuit Breaker is doing is removing, that's one of the things that we learned last year when we went through the Circuit Breaker, was that we were accounting for it wrong. We were using Circuit Breaker as a revenue, and what we were supposed to do is remove it from the budget. So on Fund 4400, that $2.257 million is what we got back in Circuit Breaker reimbursement at the end of last year for fiscal '22.
Sorry, John, go back one second. Where are you on that document?
Document 12.
Yep. And where?
Right near the top where it says district-wide sped tuition and sped costs paid from Circuit Breaker revenue, Fund 4400 on the left.
Got it.
Okay? So that is the amount that we're getting back from Circuit Breaker, and it has been properly inserted into the budget by Mr. Stanbrook. Now, the difference between what we're seeing today and what we saw just a couple weeks ago is that the decision was made to take what now says 3% in this budget over there as the tuition to other school increase. That used to say 14% in the previous documents that we saw. So what the decision was just made by Jeff was to take that money out. It was $480,000 that just came out of the budget, and he brought that down to 3%. It was 14% if you look at your documents from two weeks ago at the combined meeting. So the question is, when are we going to find out when, what that number actually is? We're hearing it's 14. You've got it in here as 3. That's a big difference. Do we find out at the governor's budget that, what that number is? Is it at a later date?
I wish I could have an answer. I'll try to find out. I don't know. I really don't know. I assume it's going to come out when the governor's budget comes out. I assume. And again, what Mike had said, you know, people are advocating to lower that number. I would be really pleased if it was around 7.
So let's say it does come in at 14, and that $480,000 has to go get paid somehow. Okay? So you mentioned taking it from fiscal '25 Circuit Breaker. Well, I tend to disagree that that's the case, because what you're taking it from is the emergency leftover Circuit Breaker fund that you guys decided you wanted to keep. So right now, by my tally, it's a little under $900,000. And you wanted to keep that emergency fund in case somebody moves in in August or whatever it is. So the question will be for this committee, if it does come in at 14%, and you need to use, find $480,000, do you want to take that? And Mr. Stanbrook could tell us exactly, I know at some point, what would be left in the Circuit Breaker emergency fund, but it's not an emergency fund, it's the actual fund with what's left over. Of that little under $900 that I say, think it is, you could use that 480 from there or maybe some of it. You know, that would be a decision that the committee could make, but you're not technically taking it from fiscal year '25 because that's the reimbursement we'll get from this year, which we've already said we'll put into. So whatever we get this year, we're just really taking it from the emergency fund. And, you know, that's something that you could look at. But obviously, it's made a big difference in this budget by taking $480,000 out of it, with all the increases that you had in, you know, when you actually got your real numbers in there. And I understand, you know, I said before to a couple people, you had 3% in there for your operating costs. We knew that wasn't going to be there. So it came in more than I thought it would be, actually. The other thing that, you know, I wanted to talk about was, you know, you're talking about your budget going up 3.4% or whatever that number is. Just got to look at these as we walked in. On document 20, page 1, which is the, I guess you'd call it the assessment estimate, the calculations, and the proposed budget of $60 million, once you take out all the transportation costs, it's 57, 929, 432, which is up 3.5%. And that's the number that you've been explaining to us and, you know, giving us past history and on and all that. But honestly, the line that the towns are interested in is the bottom of step two, which is the net school spending budget. That's what the towns have to pay for. And it's better right now, but it's still going up 7.4%, where last year it was 5.58% that it went up. That's what the taxpayers have to pay. Now, honestly, everything after that, you're really guessing because until March 1st, you really won't know. So it's nice to have all of those numbers after step two, but they're really fabricated because we're, we don't know what chapter 70 is going to break down and on all of that. But it is good to see. But that $32 million, that 7% percent, that's really what I see needs to get targeted if we're going to, you know, figure this out. And I do hope, you know, I want to figure this out. There's got to be a way to do it. How it's going to be done, we got six weeks to figure that out, but that's the number really that I wanted to point out instead of the step one assessment.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? I just want to make sure we're good with public. And again, we're reading again on the 15th and the 22nd, first, and so, yeah, there'll be ample opportunities. So thank you for that comment. But so, yes, we'll come back to the committee. Don, sorry.
Yeah, just one quick comment follow-up on slide 14. So it's the S R money, used in FY '24, has 1, 2, 3 with the board certified behavior analyst, BCBA, $67,000, and ELL teachers and the pairs and bridges. So that's a total of 700, so 1,000. So this is what we talked about in preparation. This is our fiscal clip.
This is the fiscal clip next year.
To bring awareness to it. So this is, you know, one-time money that we have to spend. We got it, right? It's S R money. It's what we were given to use. I do know from speaking and hearing at different conferences over the past two years, I think our ELL teachers is something that a lot of districts have formally previously funded in their operating budgets. I mean, we've had an increase in ELL students, which has caused that right during the pandemic. So it's kind of been a perfect storm, you know, we found that need and we had the benefit of one-time money. But I guess my point is that a lot of districts were providing these exact staff in their operating budgets already. And I'll also mention that, you know, our teachers with our morale, I can't stress enough how much we support them, and I wish we could support them more, maybe with a stipend or something, you know? It's, if only, if only we could with this one-time money.
So can I just add one quick thought? So you're correct. The EL is usually in our district budget, and the coaches and interventionists are as well. We're one of the few that don't, especially in the math area. Most schools have math coaches or interventionists at the elementary level at least. We've always had reading, and we have. And the reason I mention the morale piece is we're going through an exercise on strategic planning, and one of the threats, and it's not, threat's a negative, but it's not a threat threat, is budget. And it came up resoundingly through the staff, and you'll see that in the comments from what we had on Monday, and budget. So I brought that up because we have a budget meeting, and what my staff can't hear is, oh my God, we can't pay for it. My first-year teachers, which we've been scrouching to try to get, are going to start looking to other districts. So I want to make sure we keep the momentum moving, and I appreciate Mr. Galvin's comments, too, around trying to support this budget and finding out a way. But that came up as a threat for us to make sure that we're focusing in on this and a sustainable budget.
It's related to the ELL.
Please, go ahead.
ELL teachers. Title 1, doesn't that pay for, so do we have more than?
So Title 1 is very interesting and specific, and we've lost revenue, Title 1 money over the past years. So George, Title 1 guy.
Yeah, so Title 3 is the federal ELL mandate. So that's what.
Federal Title 1.
No, Title 1 is for your students who are identified as free and reduced, or your students who are identified in poverty and those things. But I will tell you, this district is a Title 1 district, so you have one of the teachers of ELL being serviced. She works at the Duval School, being serviced out of Title 1. We're lucky enough to have that. We are a low-incident EL district. That means that until we receive, until we get, I think, to 1,000 students, we're now still low incident. So we still share Title 3 funds with the North River Collaborative Schools. So what happens there is that Nikki gets an allocation that says we can use so much for staff, we can use so much for tutoring, we can use so much for books, we can use so much for materials and things like that. But we do fund one teacher currently this year out of, well, we fund a few, but we fund one of them, is an EL teacher, out of the Duval School, out of Title 1. We can do that because that's a Title 1 school, and we're labeled a Title 1 district. But the federal grant process for EL students is Title 3.
Thank you. Okay. So we've had some good, this is the start of the process, this is the start of the dialogue. I'm sure there'll be, I know there'll be many more conversations to follow. So thank you for those that came in for the questions, and frankly, to John's point, it's a conversation that we have to have together. So the more we can have that conversation and share that, what can we do, other ideas, sometimes it's going to be feedback we don't want to hear, sometimes it's going to be feedback folks may not want to hear, but it's a conversation that is a community we have to figure out together. We've done it in the past, and I'm sure we'll do it again. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? United. And I probably should have explained this for the public. So there is a statutory requirement that we have a open public hearing on the budget. So just to clarify, that's what we have to do, we're doing that because we have to. Again, it doesn't mean this is the only time we're going to talk about the budget publicly. That'll continue to happen for the next several weeks. So moving forward with the agenda, I think the next item was the strategic planning discussion. Do you want to take that one, Jeff?
So last week on Wednesday, we met as a school committee and spoke to our two consultants around the strategic plan and how the school committee could be involved in the strategic plan. The recommendations from the consultants were putting two members of the school committee on the team, the strategic plan team, and that led to open discussions about who would represent them and how we could actually, if we don't put two members of the school committee on the team, how could the school committee be involved? Because this is the first year that I've been involved in strategic planning, that the school committee has been asked to or actually participate in the strategic planning, and I think it's very important. So that opens the discussion, I think Glenn had made the comment that we should discuss this at school committee. Right now, there are no members assigned, and that doesn't mean we need to assign, but we need to have an agreement within the committee whether to assign members or to facilitate the dialogue through, when we meet as a subgroup or a small group, transition information to the committee as reading items, and then brief the committee at our next school committee meeting and get information from the committee and bring it back to the subgroup. So what's your pleasure?
I think the only thing to add for those that weren't in attendance, the other suggestion, I think, I think it was Glenn, I think it was Glenn made, was if the teams here are meeting and they're taking notes, I think Nikki is describing, that the notes could even be shared with the school committee as well. So it would be something that we could kind of see what's happening, get regular updates, and then keep it as a standing agenda item. Maybe also kind of think about bringing the consultants in to have those conversations with us. So that was kind of where we left it, but we didn't make any final decisions if not everyone was there. And when we opened that meeting, it was really a meeting with the consultants, and I said we weren't going to take any votes, so I kind of stuck by it, even though we had some conversations. So we kind of want to bring it back here in terms of the just point. As a committee, what do we want to do? Do we have, are we okay with, well, what do we want to do? I'll leave it at that. Steve?
So I just want to look back, there was Mr. Arena that used to give us direction, and we got together that one year, it was on the strategic planning. It was at Whitman Middle.
Mr. Ahern. Jack Ahern.
Ahern, thank you.
Former superintendent of Abington.
Is that what you mean by a consultant?
Yes.
Or would it be sort of in that same vein? We got a lot of people, though. I mean, we get tables.
Yeah. So if I, so we have a consultant, Dr. Kurt Bates, who met with some of you the other night, and his partner is Dr. Judy DeLucia, and they are handling the aspects of running and taking us through the strategic plan process. And just like Jack Ahern did back in the day when Dr. McEwen was here, it's the same thing. We have 24 people on our committee, and because the school committee didn't take votes because you couldn't, because it was a workshop, I think I ended it with, well, maybe the school department will, the school district will start this for you. And basically, it was that Nikki's taking all the notes at this, and then we would come to you with the milestones that we did. So the milestones that we accomplished on Monday, this 24-person committee, the milestone was simply, everybody did this SWOT exercise throughout the district, which is strategies, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats as it relates to culture and as it relates to practice. All of those responses were tabulated from every professional staff and/or paraprofessional who stayed voluntarily to do it. From there, groups were broken up into three. We divided the groups, so it wasn't just high school dominant or elementary dominant. We tried to mix it up, and then we came up with strands or areas to focus on. Those areas to focus on would go under the buckets or the big picture items. And we talked about strategic plan here before, and what we're saying is that we go from the macro all the way to the micro. So right now, we're at the buckets or our big picture items. We then develop the themes that would go into those buckets. From there, we talk about the objectives to start implementing and to start going through five years to get the reality of what those themes are in paper, and then we'd go to the action steps, which are last, which are the, what are we doing to implement that? And how are we doing it? And what's the timeline? Is it measurable? And is it a smart goal? You know, strategic, measurable, all of those things. The committee would have the process of all the notes all the time, and then we would vocally tell you the steps we're at, ask, solicit your feedback, solicit your interest, solicit things that you would like us to bring back, tweak, be a part of, and move forward from there. That's where we're at right now, and that's sort of what we're bringing to the table.
Chris?
Yeah, so I was there at that meeting, and this is discussed, and honestly, initially, I was a little bit like, what do you mean? This is a great opportunity for the school committee to be involved in strategic planning. And through discussion, I walked away feeling a lot more comfortable, and I think the method that George is articulating could serve us well.
Okay. So I don't, we don't need a formal vote unless we want to appoint anyone, and the recommendation, I guess I'm trying to figure out if it's the consensus of the committee is to just kind of use the notes and have regular updates. Again, we can keep it as a standing item. Yeah, go ahead, Glenn.
So you'll bring us updates. We'll be able to give you back input. There'll be a back and forth, not just a. Right. It'll be updates, it'll be back and forth, and if there's something that the committee feels is missing or is lacking, or they really want to see, we would take that back to our consultants who sort of run the groups, and then at that point, if it's something that's like, like if something that's completely out of left field and never been mentioned before, then my ask would be is bring them in, let's have them talk with us again, and then move forward from there.
So the key will be, Glenn, to your point, and whether it's Jeff or George or Jen, we just need to make sure we put that on the agenda.
It'll be on the standing agenda.
As long as we put it there, we can pass over. Right. So if it's, hey, we haven't looked at anything, we didn't, we just move on, but if it's, if we don't want to, we can skip it.
Guys, always talk and say what you feel, so like, I'm pretty confident we're going to know how you guys feel. I'm sure it'll be a good.
I don't know what you're talking about, John. I don't know why you're looking over here, John.
All right. Good. The next item was a request from the Whitman FinCom. You all have the email that Rick.
No, they don't.
Sorry. Sorry. It's coming.
You have the.
I have the.
So I made copies.
Get it. Sorry.
Helen, you are, you are.
And then as a follow-up, so I'm going to read it real quick just again so we have it in the record and folks understand.
Should be one more. Steve? Do you have, yep. It should be good. I made like 16.
There's this here.
So it was, "Good morning, Mr. Howard." The date was January 26th, and he writes, "I'm writing today to request Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee consider the appointment of Whitman Finance Committee Vice Chair Kathleen Otina to the Whitman Middle School Building Committee. As you may be aware, the FinCom member that had formerly served on this important subcommittee, Dave Cordero, is no longer a member of the Finance Committee. Accordingly, the Whitman Finance Committee has no representation on this building committee as required by MSBA regulations 963, Mass. Reg. 2.01," in parentheses, "3V. As the FinCom liaison to the Whitman Hanson Regional School District, Ms. Otina shares the requisite proficiency and passion for providing the best educational opportunities for the students of our district as the members of the school committee, further by having a full understanding of the financial impacts of such a critical capital endeavor, she brings a balanced perspective to the table as the Whitman Middle School Building Committee continues its work to bring this project online. The Whitman Finance Committee has unanimously voted to recommend Kathleen Otina to represent this body on the Whitman Middle School Building Committee and sincerely hopes that the Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee votes to concur with this position. Please reach out to me directly if you have any questions. Sincerely, Rick Anderson, Chair, Whitman Finance Committee." So with that, yes.
Well, I'd just like to make a motion to appoint Mrs. Otina to the building.
Second.
So what's this? I feel like this is part of it.
So can I finish?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I thought you were done, so I raised my hand and asked to be recognized.
Yep. So we have a motion in a second, but I'm going to continue with a little bit of this because I think it's relevant, because anytime there's a citation of a regulation, I think, given the history of the school district, I like to make sure what the regulation says and whether or not we're following it. So the second page you have, which is page two.
We didn't get page two.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, okay.
It stopped. It stopped. It stopped with that.
It's page two. I have one.
It looks like this. It says B, and it's kind of...
Do you guys need one?
I have my page two.
So basically, the gist of it, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but there's a section in there that talks about basically a local budget official or member of the local finance committee. And so this is 963-CMR-2-10. So I think it's important to at least look at the plain language that says a local budget official or a member of the local finance committee. So I just think for, again, the public record, it's important to understand that we do have a local budget official. That's Randy Lamatina, who is listed as the local budget official. So I think it's important to recognize that the composition of the building committee is, at least based upon this, is consistent with the plain language of the regulation. Having said that, I think it would be relevant for us to consider Ms. Otina potentially in that role, but more importantly, a member of the Finance Committee. Right? Because we don't have that representation. So then, so I can just finish. So then Jeff and I talked about this a little bit. And I said, so who has the legal authority to put someone on the building committee? Because that's kind of the next question. Do we even have the authority to do this? So he reached out to MSBA, and MSBA said...
It's a local decision.
It's a local decision. So it's not in the reg anywhere. It's a local decision, which makes it a little interesting. So what I was going to suggest to this committee was perhaps that we could consider, and let's maybe try it this way to see if it works, that we would support the idea or notion of having a finance committee member on a building committee and support that as a recommendation. And then perhaps we could turn it over to the building committee and see if they would also concur. And it sounds like the Finance Committee has already determined who that would be, and we could move forward. That's kind of my suggestion. Because I'm not clear that we have the authority to fulfill the motion that you just made.
Can I amend my...
How about you withdraw? And withdraw the second. Great, so now we're back to... Let me kind of get to that point.
Can I make a motion?
Sure, you put me in motion.
I'd like to make a motion for the school committee to recommend...
A finance committee member?
For Kathleen Otina to be appointed to the building committee.
Second. So again, to me, it's important that... So I mean, I'll take this kind of two different ways. I've gotten to know Ms. Otina and what she's about and who she thinks. And I think that's all wonderful. My point is, I always get leery of appointing people because, you know, I don't know, she might win Powerball tonight and move to a tropical island. And now we've appointed a person and not a position. So... But we can do whatever and just leave it as it is. So right now, the motion is to recommend Ms. Otina as the Finance Committee member. We can move to discussion. Because I see a whole bunch of hands. And I think I saw yours first and yours second and yours third.
I just have a clarifying question. So was there originally a Whitman FinCom person on the building committee?
No.
Yes.
So hang on.
Cudero happened to have been a FinCom member.
Oh, geez.
But he was on the... The gentleman has geotechnical engineering experience.
No, no, no. Then it was my clarification.
So hang on, hang on. One at a time.
I just...
John Galvin was.
John Galvin.
FinCom.
Yes. I was a FinCom member.
Were you on there as a FinCom?
Yes, yes, he was.
Okay.
Just as a point of order.
I know Cudaro was specifically because of his...
One step at a time. So I think the clarity is...
So my...
To answer your question, have there been people that are or were FinCom members on that committee? Yes. The requirement...
Is or.
Is or.
Correct.
However...
Past practice.
Again, I think we need to be considerate of... This is where I think, again, these community conversations help. If you're building a building in the town of Whitman, I don't know, it might be helpful to have someone of the Finance Committee on that committee. But that's... So I had you, and then Fred, and then Beth. Yes.
So as quote-unquote the appointing authority, according to Jennifer Flynn and my conversations with her, the appointing authority is the chair of the building committee itself. That being said, the way I've appointed people to fill positions is brought it to the committee. And I would have no problem bringing Kathleen to the committee along with someone else who's written a letter asking to be on that committee if an opening, you know, came up and letting the committee discuss it and decide it. One of my fears is we have a large committee. And the larger it gets, the higher the form requirements are. And I hate to see us not be able to do business because we have so many. I would prefer if it was consolidated, but it is what it is.
Beth, and then David.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I mean, it's nice that the school committee recommends. However, I think it's up to the building committee because that's Whitman. And that's who's responsible for this building. And I think that would, you know, it's nice you recommend to the building committee and take it up. And like Fred said, I know we've had other people request to be on it, too. And since we've already satisfied the budget part, I don't know, I think we have to be careful and consider other, you know, people who have requested to be on it.
Hang on. So, okay. Beth, and then David. So I'll make sure I'm not losing track of this side of the table and throw something at me. Go ahead, David.
Just some clarification because I might have it confused. So when we originally formed the building committee, did we agree to have finance committee members on the building committee originally?
So I can answer that question. My task was to form the committee. And on that, I wanted finance committee members. I wanted a board of selectmen member. I wanted people that serviced, like Donnie Essen, people who had building experience because that's a box. There are multiple boxes, school committee and such. So we fulfilled it with, at that point, Dave Cudero filled a double role of the geotechnical experience. And Mr. Galvin was one of our members on FinCom. So we fulfilled all the boxes with additionals in case people did leave. And we did have more. Mr. Cullody was on, and Beth was a member of the public at that point. Now as a school committee member. We've had six iterations of this committee in the past two years.
And then another question I had in terms of the quorum, as Fred mentioned, with Cudaro gone, if we were to, or if the building committee was to recommend another individual to sit on that committee, would the quorum be the same as it was before? Or is it additional or less members?
So I believe we started, George, if I'm correct, at 17.
Start of the 16 voting numbers.
And we are at 14. And we are at 14 right now.
So it's decreased.
It has. We are at 14.
Yeah, which will be filled with Mary Beth.
In a couple of weeks.
When she comes on board.
So again, I think it's... This is about as... The statutory clarity on this is about as clear as mud. So thank you. Thank you for whoever wrote this regulation and making it as messy as they could.
It's MSBA.
However, again, I don't... I think that I'll support the will of the committee. To me, I think if we make a recommendation tonight, we can certainly leave it in the hands of the building committee, and we could certainly revisit that if we need to in the future. Again, I'm hoping we can all work together and common grind, common minds, common goals here. And we just kind of move this forward and it doesn't turn into something it has to be. I hear your point, Fred. But I also know certain of this. As the chairperson of this committee, it only takes a vote of this committee tonight, and I'm no longer the chair. So I find it odd that a subcommittee chair would have unilateral...
Appointing authority.
Right.
You have appointing authorities from this committee.
No, no, I get it. But my point is, the school committee can change that appointing authority with one motion, a second, and a vote right now.
I assume the building committee could as well.
Right, so I guess I think this is where it's murky. So again, I'm hoping we can kind of move it forward, make a recommendation. I think we have all gotten to know Ms. Otina. If she's willing to sit here for two hours and 40 minutes on a Wednesday night, and, you know, I'm pretty sure she's going to show up at the meetings. I could be wrong. I might eat those words, but I'm pretty sure.
She... Let me just say that she's been wonderful.
This and this, right? That was the order, right? I mean, y'all know, or we recognize, and what are we doing?
I'd like to try and recognize.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I agree with David. That was the question I had. Has it increased or decreased? Right? And it's... At most, it's going to stay the same with this appointment when we get a town administration, right? And in the spirit of replacing Mr. Cudaro, who is a finance committee member, with another finance committee member, that's, you know, I think that's plausible, like a reasonable move.
Okay, so the motion is to recommend. Do you have anything? Do we have anything different? Otherwise, I'd really like to move.
What I want to say is, Ms. Otina's been wonderful about coming to the meetings. She's... Matter of fact, I reached out to make sure she got the information prior as to anything that's going to be discussed, agendas, et cetera. The way I've done other appointments is I brought it to the committee and let the committee discuss it and put it to a vote. And that's what I would do here.
Great. Excellent.
Yeah, nice, simple, wide open. And I've got no problem with her. She's a very smart, intelligent, level-minded person.
Dawn, did you have something? Are you okay? Yes.
Hi, I'm a colleague from Franklin and Whitman Finance Committee. Amber, one of the reasons that you want a finance committee isn't just for your committee, but for reporting back and trending on your finance level and how we're going to handle whatever choices you vote in. So having a committee member that reports each week is very helpful financially.
Understood. Any further discussion?
Sure.
Oh, yes.
Just one more thing. You know, I will also add that not only is Ms. Otina Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, but over the last, what, three or four years, she's been our education liaison. She's been very involved with everything going on in our community. She's been at the forefront of issues going on within the district and also within the municipality. She has a good pulse of what's happening in the community. So frankly, I think Ms. Otina being on the building committee could alleviate a lot of anxiety because we have such a well-qualified candidate who enthusiastically wants to be on board. So I want to say thank you, Ms. Otina.